All right, hello everyone. I'd like to call to order the second meeting of the Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee.
At 7:08.
At 7:08, thank you. So I think I saw six members present, which would be a quorum. We have Dorota, Melinda, Will, John, Jake, and Michael.
And state who's not here for the record.
Who's not here is TJ, Sherry, and, well, this is not here.
Fincher.
Yes, Tim Fincher is not here, thank you. Everyone is virtual. We have Councilman Andy Wardman, who was our liaison and present, and staff is present. So then we move on to the adoption of the agenda, and I hope you've got a chance to look at the agenda, but there is one thing that I do want to suggest. I guess it's not really relevant now because a couple of people, both Sherry and TJ, didn't answer the survey, but they're not here. I was going to suggest that we take a break to answer the survey, but since they're not here, it doesn't matter.
Are you always, are we ever going to have them anywhere? Every single person's here?
I don't know, but the idea is that I wanted to use the survey to streamline the discussion today, but with only six out of nine responses, I guess we could go forward with that. So I don't really, I'm gonna revoke our discussion from early or not offer the opportunity to take the survey during the meeting. So I guess with that, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Dorota said so moved, but later. Do you want to second that?
There's no, we'll do that.
Oh, there's no seconds, there's no seconds between you.
Yeah, there's no seconds.
Yes.
I'll second if you don't have another one.
Oh, no, we're not, yeah, I just remembered, we're not doing seconds for this committee, so.
Keeps it, it keeps it moving faster.
Keeps it moving. So, all in favor? If you're not on camera, you have to say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That's majority, that's unanimous, I believe.
Okay, Jake says, okay, there we go. Thank you, Jake. All right, so that's unanimous, agenda is passed. Next up is adoption of the minutes. Did everyone get a chance to go over the minutes? I mean, there is mostly just, I brief you guys, hot stuff, so. Does anyone have any revisions to the minutes? Okay, hearing nothing, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
As presented.
As presented, for October 8th.
I'll move that we, I move that we adopt them.
Okay, thank you. Great, all in favor, say aye, or raise your hand. Okay, that's five hands, and Dorota, thank you. All right, motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have public comment period. I do know that we have.
We do.
A few public comments.
I only have one.
You have, do you have the one from the resident in Metalark?
I have whoever lives at Lark Ridge Court.
Yes, yes, that's Metalark. And then I believe Mr. Odell also wanted to make a public comment, so it's a matter we go first.
I'll go ahead and read this into the record.
Okay, sure, sure.
Okay, this is.
Say your name and address.
This is from Lisa and Gary Rose of 1209 Lark Ridge Court. They state, "We live in the farms of Metalark, and our property adjoins Scott and Beverly Lett's property, so naturally, we are very interested and concerned about what happens to their land if and when they sell it. Our neighborhood and the surrounding three pond acres neighborhood are both considered rural residential neighborhoods, and with five acres, our property is the smallest of the acreage that are contiguous to the Lett's property. We bought and moved to Marvin in 2019, moving away from the one-house, one-acre model of Weddington after seventeen years, to finally realize our dream of living on some acreage. It is important to us to preserve our backyard and the sanctuary it provides, not only for us, but to thousands of different plants and animals that live here too. In fact, our property is a certified wildlife habitat through Marsh and the National Wildlife Federation, and with good reason, as our yard is hosed to many species, like the monarch butterflies, big dipper fireflies, and the Carolina gnolls. We feel it's important that someone from the committee come and see our property, so they can fully understand how this development will impact not only our yard, but our entire neighborhood and the other rural residential neighborhood that adjoins Lett's land. When developing Marvin, please consider that, once these rural lands are developed, that's forever and will have a perpetual impact on the local environment. No one is making any more raw land. We hope that the village and its visionaries have the foresight to commit to preserve its rural nature. After all, that's what's attracted many residents here in the first place, and preserving some of its rural heritage will not only benefit residents now, but will also be a generous gift to the future residents of Marvin. The Heritage District needs to reflect Marvin's rural heritage in order to live up to its name."
Awesome. Thank you for that comment. We really normally don't respond to public comments, but I would just like to say that they did come to a coffee with council and expressed since then, "I made a pretty big mistake when drawing the site plan for the overall site originally, because I didn't realize that basically the back quarter of Scott Lett's property is an unbuildable wetland, so if he'll want to have the same yield, they would be closer together, but in the front of his property." And I guess that's all I'll say to that, because we shouldn't really be responding to public comments. But they seem to be very, much more happy with that response, because they were concerned about the environment because of that wetlands that I didn't know about, and they looked at that drawing and said, "Oh, you can't do that." And actually, that's true, that's very true. So next, Mr. Odell did say that he wanted to make a public comment, so.
And Ross, please state your address after you, after you go, when you begin.
Your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Ross Odell, and I live in Raleigh, North Carolina, but our property is at the corner of Newtown Road and Metalark and Marvin Roads, where the roundabout is going in. So there is no address for setting for the parcel. The comment that I was going to make is.
I'll give you a question for later.
We already, I'm not sure how many of the people on this group know that our property's already been approved for an eight-lot subdivision, and so I'm not sure how we fit in to this plan. I'd be glad to work with the group on how best to develop our property. We could change things, it would take a while and money to do that. The thing that would benefit us the most would be the water and sewer connections. Again, that's just from a public health standpoint. It'd be much better to have the water line extended and through the roundabout, and then we could join onto that. Otherwise, if we don't, and the roundabout gets built, then they're going to have to come back in later and tear it up to bring the water line across. The sewer line, they are supposed to make two manholes on Newtown Road, and so it would be nice if we could connect to that. And again, just thinking from a public health standpoint. Our property does perk enough where we can get eight subject fields in, so we don't absolutely need it, but again, it seems like it'd be best to have it all coordinated. And the last comment I'd have is that we're sort of sandwiched in there between whatever Scott Lett does and whatever TJ wants to do, and I'm perfectly willing to work with TJ on having a driveway come out to Metalark claim, but we've got to be careful that we don't put anything in there on a commercial basis, because that would take away from our, the lots that we're putting in, again, an average of three acres for the eight lots. So that's it, so I just want to stay in touch, and anybody feel free to contact me, and Rovik, you can give them my information if they'd like to contact me.
Sure, I'll say if anyone wants to contact Mr. Odell, just let me know, and I will give you his contact information. Okay. Would anyone else in the virtual audience like to give a public comment? Okay, hearing nothing, that's great. We will move on to the first item of new business, which is a presentation from DFI, who is going to be our economic consultant for this project. I can just give a one-sentence introduction, but then let them take it away. Here today with us, we have Eric Thomas, Emily Bailey, and Marcia Parrott. They're from DFI, Development Finance Initiative, which is a group out of UNC School of Government, and they do this basically for municipalities. They do a lot more than what they're doing for us today, but they'll be doing the economic analysis of whatever parameters for the district that we come up with in this, in this committee, and determine whether, you know, that's feasible, and give us alternatives if it's not. So with that, I'll just let them take it away. I think they have a presentation, so I'll give you a screen share.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great, all right, let me get the presentation queued up here, and then try to share it. I know we have a pretty full agenda this evening, so I will try to make this as concise as possible, and so we'd be a lot of time to be developing the parameters for the village center concept. So as Rovik mentioned, if you all see the PowerPoint that is up on the screen, the village of Marvin, okay, wonderful, wonderful. As Rovik mentioned, I'm Eric Thomas, Senior Project Manager with DFI. I've been with DFI since 2014. In the meeting also tonight, Emily Bailey, who has been with DFI. Emily, you want to introduce yourself, or?
Hi, I'm Emily Bailey. I'm the analyst with DFI. I've been with DFI since June of 2019, and I'm going to be a, I've been with the financial on that village center concept.
Great. And who else? Marcia Parrott.
Marcia Parrott, Associate Director with DFI. Nice to meet you.
Well, great. So tonight, we wanted to give a very concise overview of who DFI is, what we do, how we get engaged by local governments, and then talk a little bit about the project that we're brought up on building to conduct, essentially that feasibility that Village Center. So I'm going to jump in here, and if you all have questions along the way, please feel free to, and we'll pause at the end, and get to the very short presentation about this question as well. So with that in mind, as Rovik mentioned, DFI, we operate properly out of the U of C capital, both government, founded in 2011. I'm assuming some of you are well familiar, well worked with the School of Government, School of Government, FII, but Development Finance Initiative was born out of, out of a need of local governments to, one, the School of Government had the expertise and out provide legal, how can local government join in development partnership or any other legal authority to partner in development or other activities? But there was sort of this gap in, you knew what the legal authority was of local government, but you didn't necessarily know whether it was a good decision to enter into partnerships or other, if, if the local government. So Development Finance Initiative was sort of, were out of that idea of, we know what the legal authority of local government is to help real estate development projects, but is it a good idea? Doesn't make financial sense, as to why DFI was born, was to help local governments answer those questions of, doesn't make financial feasibility then, tender into a public partnership. There were a group of real estate development experts, land planners, landscape architects, that essentially think through real estate development projects for, ultimately realize the public's fault, with any type of real estate development project. So we come at it from a sort of a process, what we call our pre-development process, this is one of our sort of bread and butter processes, where we imitate the process that a private developer would take when evaluating a project, is it best, feasible or not? And so what we layer in are essentially four sort of quadrants of a box. One is public interest. This is where we sort of differ from the private development perspective. We layer in public interest to ensure that, whatever program we ultimately evaluate for a real estate development project, it matches what the town, the village, city like the have been, been committed. So we layer in public interest, we layer in site analysis, so if you have a good excited mind, we'll work through, but the constraints and opportunities are a little bit specific site, we'll perform typically a market analysis, and that's where you start to evaluate supply and demand, rents, capture rate for specific types of products and program uses that the town or the, how do we, oftentimes it's retail, multifamily residential, or office uses. And then we layer in financial feasibility, financial analysis. We develop a pretty in-depth, typical, in-depth pro forma to evaluate private development returns, projected public potential investments into public partnership, and then ultimately, it's an iterative process where you may have to go back and forth, but ultimately develop a program for a feasible project that makes sense from good perspective, from a private development perspective, but also from layering in those public interests, and efficient use of public dollars, or does this project match the public? So this is what we call our pre-development process. For the purpose of this project that we're engaged in, I'll talk a little bit more about those specifics in a few minutes, we're going to do a heavy lift in terms of the financial modeling, so develop a financial pro forma that not evaluates private development potential, but also evaluates potential public investments needed to support the private investment. And then ultimately, as I mentioned, try to come to what might be feasible project. So you all have already developed kind of public interest around the village center. You all have done some site analysis or testing programs and developing those densities, and I know there's some preliminary parameters that have already been developed, and that's what we're here tonight to essentially hammer those out and get that sort of right vision for what you all want to see. And then, what we're not doing is a part of that, is not getting heavily into what that supply-demand objective, if the future is going to be, or what we'll do is evaluate market rents for what type of, what kind of retail and multifamily could generate in the village center. So DFI, as I mentioned, we've been a program of school government, we have projects all across the state. We've worked in brownfield redevelopments, in-village development in small communities to work in large municipalities like Wilmington and Durham. We've also done a wider group of projects, going from small various sites, to evaluating town center concepts, that we've, we've helped local governments in Florida, Florida, and others think through a phase strategy for developing town center, but not all the active ones, think through a phase in strategy that one layers in the public interest. So that's a little bit about DFI, I think if I want more, but let's talk about this visiting project that we're here to work with you all. And so we were hired last month to essentially evaluate feasibility for the village center concept. What the village center feasibility analysis will incorporate on our end is, we're going to review all the existing plans that have been done to date regarding your village center. I know there's been public input about, but the village center, any tail, like a baked-in traffic, or scale and type of usage have been sort of addressed as specific items to, for village center. So we're going to review all that information, and I think tonight will be a key component that we're going to layer into our work also. What we'll also incorporate into our feasibility assessment is that village provided development program plan, so you all are coming up with those parameter in terms of density and scale that you want to see within the village center. What we will do, take that plan, that scale, density, amount of, et cetera, whatever you will all deem to be the vision that you want within your center, and what we'll do is, we'll take that, we'll build it out into a financial pro forma model that, one, evaluates the private development performance of the project, does this make sense for private developers in terms of investor hurdle rates? Would they be able to finance a project based on what project performance looks like? And we're going to layer in current development, how much it costs to develop features that you all have in mind. And two is, what are those market trends? Do you want to experiment, coffee shop, or restaurant, or breweries, or boutique shop? We'll layer in what those real estate market trends are, to understand what that private development perspective and those returns look like. And then what we'll also do, in, do the private development side, but we'll also layer in at public financial impacts. So there's going to be infrastructure needed to support this development, so we will layer in what those public investment dollars look like, and also layer in what the potential real estate tax generated from that private development would look like, so you get a full understanding of what that potential net financial impact to the several development looks like, from both the private development perspective, but also for yours sake, the public impact. And so, you know, we've done a little bit of due diligence. Obviously, there's still a lot of work to be done to understand what that full program, that final program that we're going to evaluate is, but, you know, sort of building off the work today, we've understand, you know, there is a village-centered commercial concept of having, you know, some restaurants, small density, low density, kind of respecting the character of the village environment that currently exists. We've looked at the previously, previous reports that have been completed to understand really sort of what those interests are in the village center, some of those parameters. Obviously, some of the work is still preliminary, but we wanted to understand as much as possible really sort of what that vision is, to help give us a footing for this meeting tonight. And so if we were to sort of synthesize what we've, what we've found from the reports as far as, the development of the village center showed, and this is a set of guiding public interest, this is, we do this for every single project that we get involved in, is to understand.
Muted.
All right, the development, what do you all, as the local government, want to see happen with the development of the village center? And so that way, if you're ever going to bring in a development partner to help you execute this project, you can give them this set of list of guiding public interest, to essentially say, "This is what we want, realize this." So this is more based on from the vision of what you all want to see, but what we've gathered from your report, from the plans and other reports, is the development of the village center should establish a low-density commercial core that has a mix of uses, including retail, single-family residential. And it should definitely incorporate green spaces. That seems very heavy in all of the stakeholder outreach and other reports, was the incorporation of public green space for fields, trails, sidewalks, and water features, and there's several water features that are impacting the potential development of the village center. And then a third sort of idea that's come through in some of the plans and reports is really preserving that current density, preserving that scale, that's what exists within Marvin today. So all of these things have come through, all these public interests have come through before, and obviously, these are not final. We haven't got in front of you, we haven't had significant conversations, but this will help us as we think through that financial pro forma, and as you all, you know, you may want to make modifications, but essentially, it's to help inform you of, when you start thinking about this development program, this is sort of how we're thinking about from the private development perspective. And so just a few other things that have come up, again, I talked to Rovik, and obviously, these are preliminary, but what we, what we take in from the plan is, again, density to be high, that's come, that's sort of come to the top in terms of interest with the, with the village center. And so low density is what we're seeing. Right now, what we've, what we've seen sort of preliminarily is this .1 FAR, meaning, you know, the floor-to-air ratio is essentially, if you're on a one-acre development pad, you have a 4,000 square foot retail space or commercial space. Go more than one residential per acre, that I believe is giving a year, sort of 35-foot maximum height, possibly, through story. I think with that density that you all have sort of demonstrated here, it's hard to get any depth of any ability height within the village center, so just wanted to put that out there. Walkability, this came through a lot also in our, in our sort of initial dive into the reports and plans that have been done. Commercial buildings, sided within 300 feet of any arterial street, accessible from sidewalks. It's good to get these parameters for what you all sort of look and feel. And then parking situated in the rear of the commercial buildings, trying to establish that some of the walkability, village center, giving that sort of sense of, not a strip mall where you park in front of parking, it's very convenient, obviously tucked back behind, to get more of this walkable village center feeling. And then so, that's sort of the information we synthesized. I'm going to have one more slide here to tell me what we're going to do next. And so at DFI, we have Emily, who's mentioned she's the analyst, she's a financial analysis guru, she's going to be putting together the financial model, who else, who is also not here to be the advisor, development advisor that we have, who will be involved in this project, who is sort of on the, in the field doing real estate development himself, and so he will have that really great perspective on development cost. But what we're going to do for the next steps will be, you all are going to confirm the preferred village center development program. What we're going to do is determine those current market rate rents that we need to achieve within the village center, and those cost assumptions, we're going to rely heavily on our development expertise in-house and our development advisors, and then we're going to develop that financial pro forma of the, of the preferred village center. Again, evaluating the private development perspective, as well as layering in those public financial impacts for infrastructure and other amenities that are going to be compatible and also go sort of hand-in-hand with that private development. So Rovik, I'm going to pause here, and the rest of you in the committee, I'm going to pause here, I know Rovik has a full agenda. If you all have questions, though, I think now is a good time to ask those questions, or whatever sort of Rovik is thinking, or for the rest of the team.
I have a couple of questions. This is Michael Bell, Eric, nice to see you.
Hi, Michael. Yeah, nice to see you.
Two things that jumped out at me is, you said there would be, for each acre, 4,000 square, square feet of retail. Is that correct? Is that what I saw back there?
That is what you, well, what you saw here is what we synthesized to date, and it's preliminary, is that .1 FAR in terms of preferred density. So if you were to synthesize that down there, you have 43,000 square feet an acre, .1 would be 4,000 square feet per acre. So that's what we're.
Is that, I mean, I guess that goes to Marcia. Is it Marcia? Is it the financial development? I mean, is that feasible? If we're only allowing 4,000 square feet of retail for one acre, when one acre typically holds about 11,000 square feet? I mean, that's going to be a very expensive parcel.
Well, and that's, and you, you bring up a really good point of, is that feasible? And that's essentially what we're here to evaluate, is the feasibility for this strategy of development now, you know?
There's got a question. What about if a parcel is less than a ha, less than an acre? And I bring that up because my parcel is a half an acre. So how are you going to deal with that?
Well, that would be 2,000, that would be 2,000 square feet.
Exactly. I mean, so the, it doesn't have to be on a full acre basis, you can divvy it up however you want, but essentially that ratio.
No, but as far as any kind of, you know, regulation, so it's going to be like based on an acre, but could be less than an acre. Because right now, with the current zoning Marvin area, it's based on an acre.
Right, but that's just a proportion, Will. You don't have to worry about your parcel being less than an acre to be able to develop anything.
I've had that contention in the past with other planners, and, you know, I basically have determined it was like grandfathered in.
Yes, yes, a lot, a lot of, a lot of things that are built are grandfathered in, but, but like I said, if the density, the density is a proportion, which means that if you have an acre, and the .1 isn't, you know, set in stone, it's kind of just where I started like six months ago to, to give this image of low density. Obviously, in the survey, I proposed, you know, slightly higher density. Our current commercial district zoning allows .2 floor area ratio, but of course, that's a fully commercial district, so that's why I figured I'd start with .1 in a district where there would also be residential, and then maybe we go higher, maybe we go lower, and we'll talk about that when we get there, but it looks like a lot of the responses are kind of leaning towards .15 for floor area ratio as, as acceptable, so, and .2 and .25. So we might come out of this committee allowing a bit higher density of commercial and a bit lower density of residential than, than I put as the starting parameters, and that's, you know, that's fine, that's why we have this committee to, you know, to fine-tune these parameters.
Sure, good, good answer, appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Eric, if I can get back to that, I mean, so you will, with, with the parameters you're giving, you would give a recommendation, and you would say, "If we're going to do .1, you know, the market rents may or may not dictate, you know, you're going to have to have $35, $40 square foot if you're going to make something work." Is that something that you'll look into and you'll say, "If you want this, you're going to, you're going to have to be asking for rents that are above market, and so you might want to consider something else?"
Exactly. I think our ultimate, and so how we're, have we been brought up to this project is, you all provide a program of vision that you all want to see for your village center. village center. Now, it's not matching the market realities in terms of what the program ultimately that could be satisfied with this area. We know the Charlotte metro area is growing very fast, and that's something that you are having to balance here with a vision is craft that vision that you want to see for your village center. Now, we're coming in to take the vision that you all develop and evaluate that and ultimately say, oh yeah, to achieve mark, to achieve a financially feasible project, you would have to have rents at a one-point-five times premium to what you can see within your area. Or you could have a more attractive development program by increase, you know, we'll give those sort of recommendations on how to make the project potentially more financially feasible if we get, and we determine that it's not with the preferred vision that you all have.
Great, and the same thing would go for residential. I mean, if you're, if you have one residential per acre, that rolls out any sort of brownstones or, you know, homes that connect to each other and may look very attractive but don't fit the one acre or one residential per acre.
Yeah, and Michael, and I think, I don't know if Marcia are going to chime in here, but my, what it's, we're seeing with a one residential unit per acre density in a village center concept is, it's just a, it's a very low-density strategy, strategy for a village center. So in terms of that idea of that, you know, brownstone, no, you couldn't see that. One residential unit per acre is more of that single-family rural sort of density. So if you were thinking about mix of uses, a mixed-use building with a four thousand square foot on one acre, a four thousand square foot commercial building with one residential unit allowed above that, that's just a very challenging development to engineer in terms of, you know, a potentially four thousand square foot upper-story condo above a, you know, ground floor retail. So I think, you know, there is that ultimate, that recommendation that we will provide you as part of our analysis of, yeah, your vision that we have is here's where, here's where it's coming out in terms of the financial feasibility from the private development perspective. Here's maybe sort of some strategies or recommendations on how, if it's not feasible, to make it more feasible moving forward.
Perfect, thank you.
And I, I kind of wanted to add a similar sentiment about what I said about the commercial. When the original vision that I was getting from a lot of stakeholders was that you don't want to add density, the, the imagination was not that we would only allow exactly one unit on each acre, but rather that you could give a yield of one residential unit per acre and that that might be consolidated into an area in the rear, and then that commercial would be in the front. So in the sense, you could have some, you know, limited attached housing, but that there would only be a maximum of one per the parent tract. But again, just like I said with the commercial question, I did ask in the survey, you know, would you be willing to see, you know, up to one-point-one, one-point-two, one-point-five units per acre?
Yeah, something's popped up in the chat.
Um, okay, hold on.
You're kind of muffled, go ahead.
Muffled and straining to hear, okay. Darn it. Okay.
Now the microphone.
All right, I guess we'll just have to pass this around while we're talking. Hope that's better. Anyway, so I'll just try to recap what I said. Basically, not that the houses would be literally one per acre, but that each property would be allowed a yield of one per acre of the parent tract, and they might be consolidated in an area, which would, which could essentially allow some sort of attached housing. I'm not sure brownstones is the, the type of housing that would be preferred, but, but it could, it could yield some sort of attached housing that's consolidated, but not, you know, more than one per acre. But I also, I also proposed in the survey, would people be willing to see, you know, a little more than one per acre? And there was, there was a limited, you know, willingness to see a little more than one per acre, but not, not very much. I think, I think I was a little off about the sentiment in that I think people are, it looks like people are willing to, to have more commercial and less residential, and that maybe that one per acre is going to be a, a really good way to, to make this project appealing for the people who would normally be against any development, you know, to say that, look, we're doing some, you know, big mixed-use project, but we're keeping the residential density no more than one per acre. That's kind of what I'm seeing from the responses.
Question on my part for, you know, I guess Rohit or, or Eric or whatever, you know, we've got a couple of properties there, you know, within the bounds of the, of the district that are, you know, larger tracts. And I think speaking from, coming from the planning board who's been working on the land use plan for years and years, you know, we've been, and we've, we've actually, I don't think officially nailed it down, but we've been talking about the commercial area being three hundred feet deep from the street. And then, you know, so, so in your drawing here, you've got, you know, residential behind it. So whenever we start doing either the, the, the commercial F A R or the residential yield per acre, would those be calculated, you know, you divide it up and say, this is X number of acres of commercial that is within three hundred feet, or X number of residential that's beyond three hundred feet, and so the, the two different calculations. Is that, I, I assume that's the way we, we will ultimately end up.
I hope it's not three hundred feet because I got about fifty foot in front of my house in the street.
Well, we're talking about depth, total, you know, no more than three hundred feet deep.
Well, I'm just telling you, my house, Newtown is right on the road. Keep that in mind.
I, I, I know your, 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 your house. What I'm saying is, you know, no, you know, if you've got a four hundred foot deep piece of property, you can only have commercial in the front three hundred feet, not that you have to have three hundred feet of depth.
Okay, well, my, my concern was a buffer that I saw earlier with the illustration with walkability. That really kind of, kind of alerted me a little bit too. I've gotten, I've gotten on that.
Yeah, well, you, you have a, an unusual parcel.
Yes, I do, I do.
Compared to others, and that's a question mark in my, you know, for me personally, but, but I'm talking about, you know, I'm, I'm talking about the large parcels where, where you, where they will ultimately perhaps be, you know, partially commercial and partially residential. And so I assume we're going to have to divide that, you know, on, on the map, divide it up and do the, the calculations based upon the commercial component and the residential component. Is that right or wrong as you see it, Rohit, or, or Eric, or someone?
So when I imagined that density, I, I imagined it, the commercial density using only the eligible commercial area, not the whole tract. But that's, that's still up for, up for conversation as well. And in terms of Will's property, you know, a lot of things are grandfathered. Obviously, you would be allowed to keep the building that exists today, and ideally that you would, and simply renovate it internally. But I think there's a misunderstanding that the idea that three hundred feet buffer is that you shouldn't be allowed to put commercial beyond that three hundred feet, not that you need three hundred feet of space between the street and the house. That's not, that's not feasible at all. So your, your building as it stands would be perfectly viable for staying where it is and being used for something else.
Well, I was thinking about that out, or the illustration I saw where I saw the, the walkability with the wide buffer.
Right, that's on the other, yeah, that's on the.
I mean, I guess I had that in my mind, he's at three hundred.
Right, no, 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 that's on the other side of the street.
I was thinking about that mostly, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, don't worry. That, that's more like a fifty-foot kind of buffer, thirty to fifty feet, and we'll talk about that later, but that's basically if the room is available, then we put that much of, of wide sidewalk and street furniture and stuff. But in front of your property, there is not as much room, and you would, you, we would want to work with whatever you have to put a sidewalk, whatever we can do, and say we want to keep the drainage, the ditch-type drainage there. So we work with that. We have the road, the ditch drainage, and then a sidewalk, and then your existing building. So as much as we want to, as much as we can, we want to grandfather your existing building into the concept.
I've got a question in regards to the, the street of Newtown, from the two, or Marvin, roundabout feature, roundabout end of the ones that are on the other end of the corridor. Is there any consideration for the possibility of diverting Newtown into a parcel to give a, you know, a, it would be like a curve, and then allowing that property owner to have, you know, the, the road additionally substitute for the diversion, just in order to help with the cut down on the speed of traffic possible? I'm just throwing this out. I, I hope you understand what I'm saying. If not, then I'll have to, you know, draw it out and show it to you.
Yeah, you might have to draw it out, but I think that should be a conversation for another.
A diverted, a diverted, you know, divert the road around a parcel or a, an amount of a parcel to make it not so straight, and then allow that property owner to have the road, the existing road part of it as a trade-off.
Yeah, that is an interesting idea, like, kind of like a chicane, so that people.
That way it would cut down with the straight thoroughfare of traffic going through Newtown, which would slow it down.
Right, right.
I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, that's a good idea, but we, I think we really need to talk about traffic at a different meeting. Send me an email if you want.
Be back.
Yeah. Oh. Yeah, yeah, sorry, I was muted, I was muted, sorry. I really think we need to talk about traffic at a different meeting, but it is a good idea. So if you could send me an email with that concept, we'll have traffic on a future agenda, but we have a lot on today's agenda, so we can't talk about traffic today.
No problem.
Rohit, I'll, I'll chime in here and let him just say, hey, take over the streets here, I know you have a full agenda, so please steal the street back or whatever you want to do, but we're here, D F I is here to sort of fly on the wall and listen to you all as you figure out your vision for sort of the village center.
Okay, thanks, thanks. So if, so I'll just leave it here and say, if there are any more questions for Eric or Marcia or Emily or anyone from, you know, about, about D F I, then ask it now. And if there are not any more questions, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Eric, this is Melinda, and I just got a quick question for you. When you all are looking at this feasibility study, are you going to take into account, I mean, I know obviously traffic and people in the area help fuel business, right? But we also have a lot of people that come down Newtown Road that don't live here in Marvin, and you know, we're, as Marvin, we're used to going to Blakeney or to Waxahaw or to whatever, it's not like, we're not an island. Do you all take that, the more outlying community into account with regards to feasibility?
So how we're going to test feasibility is essentially evaluating, the big, the big components are really the market rents that are to be achieved within the village center and the development cost. So can the market rents justify the cost of the development? I think what we're, what we talked about earlier, what we're not wearing to this feasibility assessment as part of our scope is a full-on market analysis. I think where we stand right now with the vision that's been drawn up to date is it's so low density that it's most likely going to be justifiable in terms of the, the demand in the future, whether that's people coming from Marvin Village itself or from outside of the village to come to these, essentially these shops and these retail destinations. So, you know, I think for our terms and our purposes, we're essentially evaluating the visions that one, you all are assuming that the market can satisfy in terms of program number. So what the big pieces there are market rents and development costs. Does that answer sort of that question there in terms of feasibility across how we're going to test now?
Maybe so, thank you.
Okay, all right, great. So if there are no more questions, let's see, if there are no more questions for D F I, let's, let's keep it moving because we have a lot to talk about and I want to get to it all before maybe ten o'clock. Yeah, I know, I know, sorry. Okay, so no more questions? Any more questions? Okay, cool, cool. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is discussion of commercial density. I've listed, I've listed myself as the like moderator for all these topics, but, you know, Emma, you can chime in as well. So basically, let me, let me screen share here, one second. No, 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 no. I want to, oops.
Can't you start presenting privileges, right?
Uh, I don't know, but I'm sharing now, so it shouldn't matter. Okay, so the first question I asked, I thought it was really interesting because it forced you to think about what you want more and what you want less. And something that really came out of it is that there is a desire to lean more towards commercial and lean more, less, lean less towards housing. Obviously, open space was really important, but that's kind of average. Parking was leaning less, and buffers along residential was leaning less, buffers along major roadways was kind of leaning more. But for now, I just want to skip right to the discussion of commercial density because that's where we're at. These are the, the two big questions that we would be talking about in terms of the responses. And for John, T J, and Sherry, if you haven't, since you haven't sent the survey yet, you could, if you could just send the responses maybe within the next few days, so we can incorporate your input into this, you know, this analysis here. But basically what we're seeing is, so I proposed point one floor area ratio in the beginning because, you know, I was, I was getting the vibe that this must be a very low-density district, but then, you know, talking with a lot of people, we're, we're seeing that there is, you know, there is a, some sort of willingness to do a little, something more compact as long as there is more buffers and more open space. So I'm actually seeing that half the people said point one-five is okay, one person said point two, and two people said point two-five is okay for the density. And even point two is not that dense, actually. But when you combine that with the other conversation that housing is desired a little less, you do get the ability to fit the little more commercial, a little less housing. So the topic at hand here is, would you, would the committee be willing to consider some sort of, maybe some, an average of the responses that I get for this question as the recommended density for this district? What are your thoughts on that, everyone?
Rohit, I mean, I think what we're doing here is we're, we're trying to answer a question before we have all the facts. You know, we don't know, I think that's why Eric and his crew are here to kind of evaluate what's out there for us, present it to us and say, you know what, if this is going to work, if this is going to be feasible, here's what you're going to have, here's what you're going to need to do. I mean, so this is really, I think, the cart before the horse. We're getting ahead of our skis here a little bit.
I, I understand that this, this economic analysis is a little bit of a chicken and egg issue, where they do need parameters to plug into a model, and we need to kind of give them some parameters before we really know what we want for sure and what would work. But we have to start somewhere, and I think the timeline for this is kind of meshing in a way that, you know, we can give them some parameters, and then they can come back and tell us, you know, if they're, you know, on or off, basically, what we would need to do, and we can reassess that at a future meeting. But I, I do want your input in, what would you, what would you want to talk about first? If not, if not the way we're doing it now?
Well, again, I think exactly what I said, I mean, you, you've hired them, you've given them a task, you've shown them what they have to work with, and I think it's their job to come back and say, based on what you've given us, if this is going to work, and you want residential and commercial, the commercial has to be point two F A R and the residential has to be this, and then we evaluate that, and we say, okay, now that we know that, well, this is the kind of housing we want, or this is the kind of buildings we want, or, you know, it's just not going to work. But if we're throwing out numbers. has to be this, and then we evaluate that and we say, okay, now that we know that, well, this is the kind of housing we want, or this is the kind of buildings we want, or, you know, it's just not gonna work. But if we're throwing out numbers to them and it's not gonna work, we're wasting our time and their time.
Yeah, I would agree, this is Jake, I would agree with Michael completely, and, you know, it sounds like two-thirds of us already filled the form out, and so just going back over what we already filled out, um, you know, I'd rather everybody fill it out, and then to Michael's point, get the guidance and layer it over on top of that.
So I guess the original question that I asked might be reasonable to say, would you guys just be fine, instead of having a discussion right now, would you guys be fine with me giving DFI the average of your responses as the input for their model?
Uh, I would not be comfortable with that, no. I think we give, I think we give them the whole picture.
I agree.
Not to make any decisions on it, but to use it as a data point.
I agree, because I think if you go back to like even the survey of what the, what the community said that they wanted in 2019, I think it's kind of dangerous to take the average, like, to put all of the answers together versus looking at what the majority already said.
100%, because the average of square footage, I can tell you what I voted, is about half of what, um, you know, the top mark would be. And so the average would be just over 50% more than what I put, and again, not that it's all about me, but to just blindly sign off on like, hey, that's okay without conversation, uh, is not really what I signed up for.
What I observed was the corner lot of Pinch, he's got one of the largest parcels, so the, the larger amount of square footage is going to be affecting him, and that's how I kind of played into it. And I had a higher square footage based on his, so that's something to consider. We all have different parcels. We all are affected in different ways. I'm not gonna have a 10,000 square foot building on my property, but Pincher's gonna have a lot more acreage to deal with, so that's something that needs to be taken into consideration.
Of course.
But I think that, isn't the idea of this, though, that regardless of the size of the parcel, we're putting in, we're putting in parameters to help ensure that even if you have, and I know this is always the example that gets used, but even if you have space for a Walmart, that just because you've got the space for it doesn't mean you get to put one in, right? I mean, I think at a certain point, the idea is to set up these parameters to help maintain the quaintness and the rural area that we all, the reason that we live in Marvin.
Well, the restrictions can be for not having something like a Walmart. To have something that's more conducive to the small area, but a enough square footage to make it worthwhile for the land mass that's there. So, that's what I was looking at.
Sure, makes sense. Yeah, and it looks like, I mean, DFI has done this from what I can see, you know, 50 times, it looks probably more, I mean, I'm just looking at 50 times in North Carolina. They know what, they know what, what needs to happen. They've done this, they've seen it, and you know, let's, let's hear from them first.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
I was gonna say, Eric, are you, am I talking over you? Let me just jump in to say, part of this scope, which, which we agree and sympathize is maybe not ideal in terms of getting you the best information, is frankly just a function of the budget, too, that we have to work with. You're right, we have helped plan for town centers now in several communities around North Carolina, but typically, it's months of pre-development work and research that goes into it. So we were trying to find a way to right-size the scope with the budget so that we could give you all enough information to keep moving forward, but in a way that works, works with your budget, frankly. So that, that is why we conceived of you all as the committee, giving us some parameters around max build-out development, and then we would use those to do a first-pass, high-level financial feasibility assessment. But we hear you, if, if budget was not a consideration, we would love to dig deep, be with you at, at the beginning and, and think about this really carefully.
And, and Michael and Melinda, the one point I think that you kind of raised so far is, we're testing the financial feasibility, now that the area and the development costs and the market rents, those aren't necessarily gonna change based on how much density you all want to see within your, the village center. It's going to essentially evaluate now, there might be, okay, what developer would want to build a 4,000, I think you, you run into the question of, is it developable in terms of, do you have someone that would want to do a 4,000 square footer, 8,000 per feet only of retail space and boutique styles? So I think the feasibility analysis will sort of get to the same point, whether it's the higher density versus lower density, but in terms of the pool of potential developers to execute on a plan of very low density. Now, what we've also heard is the potential landowners wanting to be the developers of this property in the long term, so that kind of takes out finding a developer to potentially build it. You know, we've been kind of told a lot of information that could make this project a little more, hey, let's kind of think outside the box in terms of, we don't need to attract a developer to come do this project, we already have a person, we didn't get the feasibility approach from the sort of rent, development cost and infrastructure. So, I think we've also been sort of under the assumption that, hey, this is potentially a develop already, we just need to understand if it's feasible or not from the rents and the development cost and the sort of public financial impact.
And furthermore, as far as, you know, the parameters you have to work for, I think that it's very, very important for this committee and everybody to understand that we just spent a great deal of time on a survey to all the Marvin residents, and we asked numerous questions, and I'm sure, hopefully, you've looked at those questions and answers. And, you know, I think we have to work within those parameters because those, ultimately, that's who we represent. It's not just this committee, but everybody in the town of Marvin, so the parameters, I think, are already there.
And what we're bringing brought in, as I think Marcia mentioned, is, Rowan and his team are synthesizing those parameters provided to us to plug into that financial feasibility model, so that's sort of, the sort of relay of information to us that he can come and show you what the, the sort of pro forma breakdown looks like.
So maybe another way to skin this is, is it, would it be acceptable if I were to give DFI the, the resident survey results from 2019, land use plan, and the results of this survey, of this committee survey, and then maybe let them take a look at it? And not just do a raw average of your responses, but then maybe just let them take a look at all of it and then have, like, and then have them determine what they think are good parameter models? Is that, I mean, for DFI and the committee, is that something that you would like to see?
Rowan, for, as you know, for the amount of time that we spent on the land use time, the land use plan and the, and the survey, I think that would be a great idea. I mean, time of many, many hundreds of hours is going to spend on those, so I think that that would be a great idea.
Yeah, I would agree.
I agree.
Okay, Eric, what do you think about that?
I think that we've done some initial evaluation of that, and it is a starting point for us to move forward, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, Gray, and Lee. But we did have some questions about potential areas of clarification or, looking at Amy and Eric.
Yeah, I don't think we've done it justice enough to essentially start to ask those questions at this meeting right now, essentially because it was to kick off to talk about our process, you know, we've done a little bit of due diligence, but in terms of synthesizing down to parameters that would be ready to plug into the model, we were, and I'm sorry, this is sort of where there was, uh, you know, potentially sort of a miscommunication. We were under the sort of assumption that we would kind of rely on you to provide us those inputs. And so, yes, we can look into those parameters from the survey of the committee, we've done a little bit digging into that, for the land use planning efforts, understand, hey, here's max densities, or here's what this sort of land use planning that has been proposed to date, what goes in and try to come up with a, a program. But again, as Marcia mentioned, this was, you know, the skill that we signed up for was a very quick, two-month turnaround, and I don't think with that sort of addition of coming with site plan work and a lot of site analysis work, would be sort of a, would be incredibly challenging to fit it into the timeline that we put in for our survey in downtown. Marcia, you can correct me if I'm wrong there, but-
I think it'd be tough, yeah.
Um, I don't, I don't know if what, I don't think the ask right now is for you to develop like site plan level analysis. I think between our staff level and conversations and, you know, working out some of the legwork, we can synthesize the results of all three of these things with you guys, but I think, I think just like to have the ammo of this, this survey in addition to the resident survey and the, um, the land use plan, I think we can come up perhaps on a staff level with the, staff level plus discussions with you, so maybe a, maybe a quick, like, one-day conversation, and we'll come up with some parameters that you can plug in. But yeah, we don't, I, I know, like, some, in some scopes, you do do like the entire, you know, front to back of the, you know, analysis and figuring out all these parameters, but I think, I guess what we're getting at is we don't need to, we don't need to go that far, but we're not gonna have just the committee give you the parameters. I think that's what the opinion is now.
I think my comment is that, uh, you know, you've got a real tough job if you're gonna, you know, trying to come up with the parameters, because I'm, you know, if DFI's done, let's say 50 of these, you know, town centers across the state, I'm not sure that you've done any that are starting with a blank slate, uh, like we are. All of them are redevelopment of an existing downtown, I assume.
And, and we have done a couple of projects that are blank slates, and those tend to be the most challenging and the hardest to get the, you know, council or board members in agreement on what the vision may be moving forward. It's a lot easier when you have the constraints of, okay, we have one infill site, let's just do that, we want to see higher density, we want to see tax-based increase, we want to see efficient use of our dollars, we want to alleviate parking in our downtown, can we do that on the site? Okay, let's think through that. But with a blank slate of a village center, it's, one, ensuring that the vision is all cohesive and collective vision of the group is probably one, one of the most important things from my experience of working on a town center project. And then, two, is, is the market, can the market satisfy the, the program? And can this, again, the market, what is the market demand for this kind of product? And I think we haven't done any market analysis, and we weren't scoping any market analysis, assuming that this was gonna be so low-density that we're just gonna kind of say, yes, whatever vision you come up with because it's sort of low-density, could be supported, but if there is, you know, a key piece of our work is doing that market analysis to understand what that sort of demand is for these products moving forward, so I think there's, you know, what typical scope would, would kind of go further beyond what we're sort of thinking through right now.
Yeah, and, and you've got a lot of different opinions, you know, even looking at the, the resident survey, because, you know, what the, the residents on the, on the far end of Marvin would like to see versus the people like Jake and Melinda and William, you know, who have a stake, you know, in the, the village center, you know, either immediately are biding it or owning the property or whatever, you know, you're gonna get drastically different opinions, I'm sure, you know. So, you know, the, you know, we really, you know, on the planning board, struggled a lot with the land use plan for these very same reasons, and, and it's a tough nut right in the moment.
I mean, I agree with you, John, but I think, you know, Eric and Marcia are, are would, would agree that, you know, when you have a blank split, and when you have a blank slate, you have the opportunity to do something really, really special. And I think that's what, you know, Marvin citizens really would expect. I mean, if we're gonna do something, we're gonna go and we're gonna do something really special because we get one shot at this, and, you know, we're hoping this will be here 100 years from now. So, I mean, this is our one shot, so we have to view it as that with a blank slate and, you know, have an opportunity to do something really nice.
Okay, so I just realized I skipped over number two, uh, which is in the agenda, housing types and density, but in any case, it seems to me that the conversation is leaning towards, um, I think at a staff level, myself and Emma would, you know, help DFI synthesize the three things, the survey, the land use plan, and the, your survey, and then perhaps give them the parameters with a little bit of their input on what, you know, what parameters we're giving them. And in that case, and I mean, if everyone's fine with that, I think we might, I think we might be able to table just discussions of the density, parking, open spaces, and stormwater, and then just give the direction to staff, you know, to work out between all of the three things, to just work out the parameters, and then, and then have their input on it, give, and then let them tell us what they think.
Land use plan, survey, and-
Yeah, land use plan, resident survey, and their, the committee survey. I mean, is that, is that how I understand the committee's opinion is going?
Do you mean give them the raw data? So, like, looking at the survey, it says that, you know, residents were up to 4,999 square feet as the maximum retail building. That's the kind of like raw data that you're talking about providing them?
Right, right. I'm, I'm thinking that I would provide them the results of your survey, like the, like the, the charts that I was just, I was just showing you. I guess I'll screen share it again, just to give you a, like, a full, a full detail of, you know, like, this is the housing types, you know, what people said about housing density maximum. People are, you're, you guys are kind of leaning towards less housing density, like, some people are saying, you know, one said nobody, no housing at all in the residential only section, but that's, I don't know. We'll, we'll, we'll basically just synthesize what you guys said about all of these, in addition to synthesizing what was said in the resident survey and the land use plan. And I think at a staff level, like I said, Emma and I will just kind of workshop it and then maybe have like a one-day workshop with DFI for them to put their input in, but like, like they said, we did kind of have a budget limitation where this was only gonna work if we gave them the parameters, not that they would not do any work on telling us what, you know, parameters would work in the beginning, but, but that they wouldn't do the, the sitting down with our stuff largely, and, you know, telling us what they think would work. So, I mean, I think, I think that's-
Rowan, I want to inject-
Yeah, go ahead.
I think the housing situation is most suitable for the 55-plus in this area. It's not gonna be as suitable for the single family with kids, and I think that's where you're getting some of the reaction to the amount of housing possibly. I'm just gonna let you, you know, let you know that. Terry Shook gave a good presentation a few years back for the landowners, and he made a strong argument for the fact that that area, that corridor would be perfect for 55-plus. The ones who are selling their large homes and wanting to downsize and have a place to stay in the area, so I'm just gonna, you know, let you have that and do whatever with it.
Yeah, and I, I think, I said this several months ago, but if we were to allow a, a much higher density, and when I say much higher, we're talking like 1.5 units per acre as much higher density, it would basically demand to be age-restricted, but it would also, I mean, for a developer's perspective, it doesn't really matter, it would make the land, you know, more reasonable for them to develop that way, but it would then also not make the impacts of traffic and school and population like a normal neighborhood would with that much density. Um, so, okay, so, we're technically on number two, and we started talking about number three, but I guess, do, do any of you want to have a discussion on the housing types allowed right now? Or do you, do you want to just take all of the factors, potentially just table them and see what we come up with at the next meeting?
Hi, this is Dorota, I think the aesthetics-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, sorry. Can we let Dorota talk first, because she's over there and you can't tell that she's talking? Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, um, so I think that in terms of the, uh, sort of aesthetics and exact layout, we probably, uh, don't want to spend too much time on that now before we have the general idea of what everybody agrees on. That's my thought.
Okay, and so I was thinking we could, we could probably table all the items except for number four, which is commercial uses, and number nine, discussion of the relationship between planning board for today, and come back to them all at the next meeting, just kind of like at a high level, so that- so that we can discuss what, uh, you know, our staff and DFI came up with. Um, how's that sound?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, sure. So, so, so if, uh, I mean.
If, if you're gonna table this, we will need a motion to table new business items, numbers two, two through eight, until the December eighth meeting.
Um, do you guys want to talk about commercial uses now, or do you want to also table that?
I mean, I think that goes, that goes hand in hand with, uh, with everything else. I mean, I, I, I think it'd be best to just, to just table two through eight, and we can talk about number nine. That's my thought, and if anyone else has any difference.
Okay, well, then if, uh, if that's the thought, can I get a motion to do that? To table items through two, two through eight, uh, to the next meeting?
Rovin, I'll do that. I move that we, uh, table items two through eight until the next meeting.
Okay, great. And that's, I guess, with the understanding that, uh.
You need a second, I think, a second, whatever.
Okay, yeah, we don't, we don't need seconds in this committee. Um, so we'll just, uh, we'll just say, um, at this point, after someone makes a motion, we'll just say, is there any further discussion? And I guess I would like to say that this is with the understanding that, uh, staff will do some synthesis work with DFI, and then, uh, we'll come up with the parameters to put in the model, basically, based on the, uh, the three things that we talked about.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, so then can I have a vote? If there's no further discussion, can, can I get a vote on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Two, three, four, five, six, okay. Um, and, okay, all right, that's unanimous. So items two through eight are tabled, and we'll work with DFI to get those parameters, and we'll talk about all of that at the next meeting. Okay, great. So, um, number nine is the relationship between the planning board and the committee. Um, so essentially, we were talking about this with council and the planning board. And the one thing is that, uh, the, the planning board would not have direct oversight, like as in, they would not give direction to the committee. But, um, obviously, the land use plan is a huge product of the planning board, and that should definitely guide, uh, pretty much all of the conversations that are occurring in this committee. Um, in addition to that, there are three planning board members out of seven, planning board members total, on this committee. And so they can come and advocate for the planning board. We will also take all of the discussions that occurred in the committee and, you know, review them at each consecutive planning board meeting. And if there is any comments, then the planning board members can bring those comments back to the committee. So there's gonna be this, this ongoing cycle of feedback uh, between the committee and the planning board to make sure that the planning board, uh, you know, has their input, the ones that aren't on the committee, and that they make sure that this committee is kind of on track at every meeting. Um, but not, with not specifically having direct oversight. But also, finally, the planning board would give their recommendation on the committee's, um, um, actions to the council as well. Then finally, the council will take both the committee's, um, inputs and the planning board's recommendations on the committee's actions, and the council will make any decisions, final, final decisions that need to be made. For example, adoption of plans and the details of them. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. Of course, this is a very kind of flexible, uh, this is, uh, we're kind of taking this as we go and seeing, I think that's the best way to go about it, and I got council's opinion, and they think kind of that way too. Um, but of course, so if anyone has any input on that, um, I'd, I'd like to hear it now. Um, and again, like I said, this is a really, uh, this, this is, this can be a very fluid process, and we'll see what works and what doesn't, and adapt along the way.
Uh, Ryan, let me just sort of throw out for the people who are obviously not members of the planning board, um, and, and several members of the planning board were really, I won't say distressed, but confused, maybe is a better way of how, how this committee and the planning board gonna work. But it's easy enough for us to say, you know, that while the planning board doesn't have any authority to write ordinances or adopt ordinances, you know, we do all of the legwork for the council to draft and recommend ordinances, like the land use plan, like the, the up and coming future zoning of the village, of the, the heritage district, or, uh, uh, or, you know, design guidelines and all those things. Uh, but I think, I think that the, the comments or recommendations from this committee will go a long way in helping maybe the planning board synthesize those as we, uh, as we go forward. Uh, and I keep saying that we spent three, four years working on the land use plan. I hope that the remainder of all of that, of the requirements for the heritage district don't take as long. But, um, you know, we need all the help we can get.
For sure, for sure. And I thought the, the idea of this committee was that we would have a more diverse, uh, you know, set of people looking at the exact parameters. Like, some of the property owners themselves are in this committee, um, and then we have members at large. We have one member of the Parks, Recreation, and Greenway Board, and we have three members of the planning board. So that would mean, you know, that not, it's not just the planning board looking at the exact details. But of course, the planning board will look at the details. It's just that this committee would be responsible for hashing out some of the more precise details. And in that way, um, we would actually kind of align the, you know, the exact details in a, in, you know, like with that diversity, we would get more precise with the exact parameters. Um, and that's, uh, I think that's, that, that is what will happen, uh, through the course of this committee. So I'm really excited about that. Um, and, and as you said, John, for the members of the committee, the members of the planning board who are not on the committee but still wanted to have input in this process, they very well will. Um, uh, they will be able to voice their concerns about everything that happens if they, you know, disagree with the committee. And then the planning board members that are on the committee can take it back to the committee at the next meeting. So there'll definitely be a back and forth, um, every month, and it will be, um, really productive, I think. Um, so, but just for the record, I forgot to say, Sherri joined us at, uh, seven twenty-eight, and Tim joined us at eight twenty-three. Um, but we actually tabled all of the items. So, uh, just to, just to say that we would synthesize it as a staff and with DFI, and, uh, give them the parameters for their model, um, and that we'll reconvene at the next meeting and let you know what we came up with.
Just for the record, is this gonna shift the committee's schedule by one month?
No, no, it will not, um, because I think we can basically just brief over all of this.
Okay, that was.
At the next meeting in addition to, and I think it will be a good idea to, um, to have all of those, all of these, these are kind of the, if there's like a pyramid structure of the, the details, like, these are high level. Architecture landscaping stuff is like the next lower level. And to have all of those at the same time, being, being able to discuss them at the same meeting, but talk about these at a, you know, kind of more quickly based on what DFI came up with. That's, that's what the committee is saying. I think they kind of want DFI to take a little bit of a lead on, um, what they think those parameters should be. So, and obviously, like, you know, they're saying staff needs to also be in that conversation, so they're not doing all the work. Um, but yeah, so we're not gonna be shifting the committee's schedule by a month. Um, yeah, I just wanted to recap because Tim just joined us, but I think that's all I have really for number nine. Um, unless anyone else has any comments about that. No, it doesn't appear so. So that means we can go into the review of action items.
Guess what, Rovin, there's just one. Uh, you, you and Emma will synthesize the information from the land use plan, community survey, and the committee survey, uh, to provide DFI with parameters.
Excellent, um, we will do that. Um, so now, uh, we are on to committee comments. Um, I'll go around the table, uh, I guess, the table of what I see on the screen.
I can give you off the bat if you'd like.
Uh, no, no, I'll, I'll just, I'll just go in a row, and then, um, I'll not forget about Dorota, who's on the phone as well. Um, actually, Dorota is on the screen. So, uh, we'll start with Melinda for, uh, committee comments.
I don't have any tonight, thank you. Thanks to everybody for your work.
Um, Michael?
Uh, yeah, sorry, I missed the first meeting, apologize for that. Look forward to meeting everybody in person, hopefully, uh, sometime soon. And, uh, I've not heard the word "synthesize" used so much in one night and tonight.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's what we're doing, so, okay, um, thank you. Will?
I'm going to second Michael, and I've got the same response. Uh, this is my first meeting, so, uh, I'm just trying to get myself kind of acclimated to everything, and, uh, I probably have some more, uh, feedback, uh, and comments, uh, next meeting, I think. So, but equally, uh, synthesizing is a strong work tonight.
Thanks, thanks. Um, and, and if anyone has any questions, I, I forgot to say, just feel free to email myself, um, or any of other staff. Uh, we'll be happy to talk to you one-on-one, and also, um, kind of let you, give you contact information about any other, you know, other committee members, if you want to get in touch with them or any other people. So, so this should definitely be a very collaborative process, that all, not all of the discussion will happen in the meeting. I, I totally expect all of you, you know, not expect, but, you know, if you want to talk to each other, like, that would be great. Um, John, you're next?
I don't think I've got anything else, though. You know, there's comments I'm, you know, sort of throwing out as I go along. I'm not a, uh, you know, rattle kind of guy, I guess, but, uh, it's gonna be interesting to try to, I won't say synthesize, pull all these different, uh, thoughts together from everybody.
That's it, okay, thank you. Um, Dorota?
Maybe, I was gonna say maybe equalize, might be a.
Equalize, yeah, something like equilibrium, yeah. Okay, Dorota?
Aye, uh, no, not many comments for me today. Um, I did spend about ten minutes trying various forms of audio to work for me, and I think I still may miss, uh, um, a little bit of the presentation, just voice doesn't carry. But, um, maybe I'll contact you offline about the audio situation.
Yes, I would love to, um, help you out with that.
So, so just a quick question, would you be able to kind of, um, shoot out a collective email on this so that people could, um, you know, if they have an idea that they think of afterwards, or, uh, you know, something new comes up, new idea, or a new comment to somebody else, that we could, uh, exchange those through email as well?
Um, I could, I could send out an email, say like with the packet, I just got the, the presentation from DFI today. Um, but what I can't do is I can't CC all of you on a single email, because that would constitute a meeting. Um, but you, you each have each other's emails, um, in a, in a PDF that was sent, like an in-house contact information. So you're, uh, very well welcome to, um, send each other an email, individually of course, but not in a group of more than five.
No, more than four.
No, sorry, yeah, not more than four, sorry, because that would be a coin.
Got it.
Okay. Uh, and yeah, and, and again, I'll, I'd, I'd love to talk with you offline to see if we can help you fix your audio issues by the next meeting, because I hate to see, I hate to see you struggle like this. Um, okay, uh, Jake?
Nothing for me, but thank you.
Okay, um, I know, Tim, you just joined us, but do you have any comments?
Tim is muted.
There you go.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, Rovin, I was, I was late, I got held up. Uh, I thought I joined it maybe a little early to what you said. But anyway, uh, I appreciate, appreciate everyone's input. Uh, look forward to seeing what these folks, these consultants from afar can, um, shed some light, some ideas for us. But, uh, anyway, appreciate all y'all's time and work to get to this point.
Okay, um, thanks. I, I actually, if you know what time you came in, um, you can definitely just, like, let me know in an email or something.
That's fine, I, yeah, I just, anyway.
Yeah, because I, that's just when I saw you come in, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
No worries. Um, and Sherri's?
No, no comments.
Okay, great. Um, Andy, would you like to make any comments?
Uh, just like to thank everybody for, uh, all the input, and, um, you know, this is exciting from the council's standpoint to listen to this and to hear everybody's opinions and input. And I am, uh, looking forward to getting, digging a little deeper into this and hearing what everybody has to, to put in. So thank you very much for all of, everything you guys are doing.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Um, and before we sign off, I would just like to say, you know, for the, the people who didn't do the survey, uh, please do, uh, maybe by like next Tuesday or so, uh, so we can give DFI the full picture. Um, and, uh, that's, that's it. Um, so if everyone's made their comment, and, uh, we have our, um, we have our action items, I think, uh, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
At eight thirty-four P M.
Yeah, at eight thirty-four.
Motion.
Oh, I think Will got it first, uh, so, uh.
Give it to him.
Okay, all, is, is all in favor? Um, let's see, one, two, three, four, five. Okay, Dorota, and Tim?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's great, okay, thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Um, thank you all for coming. Um, we'll definitely have a really good, uh, whatever the word is we're using at the next, uh, meeting.